But as far as directing action, it really comes from the board. And that is stated in our law. The other place that this is illustrated and you have a policy or the policies that we're referencing tonight, were in the handouts as well. They're all combined. This is Policy BBF, your Board Ethics Policy. And as you can see, your policy is consistent with the law as well. And Statement Number Three says that Board members recognize that they don't have any authority to speak or act for the board. So right there in your policy, you have confirmed and are demonstrating that you understand that law, that part of the law. The other statement in BBF is that the board shall act as a committee of the whole on all matters pertaining to the business and educational policies of the district. And the key word is "act." Act is you act through your vote. And so this policy just further supports what the law says about that. And it's a tough one to remember because people come to you. They want you to help them. You want to be helpful. You wouldn't have run to be a board member in the first place if you didn't want to help your students, your staff, your community members. But help them understand that the work and the decision-making really takes place through addressing the board. There's a court case in Missouri that actually, this was tested in the courts and the courts actually reconfirmed that and just in support of that law. All right, let's kind of look at a real scenario about how this might play out, okay? I know you can read, but just so we all stay together at the same time, I'm going to read it and then we'll talk about this little scenario. So in the ABC School District, they decided to add a new position for Director of Diversity and Equity. Board Member Valerie, who... I'm sorry. It would help if that is the wrong word. It should be K-N-E-W, so I apologize. I got stumbled on that. Board Member Valerie knew the district had not been focused on recognizing and addressing inequities within the district and was excited that this would become a focus. In reviewing the agenda for this week's board meeting, she noticed that the superintendent would be making a recommendation for hiring one of the candidates for the position. Anxious to ensure they selected the best candidate, Valerie contacted the Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources and asks for copies of the finalists' applications. She indicated she would stop by the next day to pick them up. All right, so is Valerie following policy? And does she have authority to make this request? Anybody can unmute and answer if you're a board member. What do you think?
I don't believe... Well, it seems like she's asking for herself personally instead of the full board. I think that's something she probably should have went across with the board first instead of taking the initiative to go do something on her own.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Carter. Anybody else want to add to that?
I would say no and no. No in the aspect that she's not following policy when it comes to personnel as well as the board ethics, as well as closed session meetings, as well as... And she does not have the authority to make the request on that aspect. The authority comes from the board as a whole and not a board member individually.
All right, great. Those are... You're both correct. Absolutely. She doesn't have... She's not following policy, as you stated. And she is, as an individual board member, she doesn't have authority to request that personnel type of data. If the board thinks, feels like that they need that level of information to make a good decision, they could request those. Although, again, it would be a little... Out of the ordinary. It might be appropriate for the board to say, "How many candidates did we have? You know, what's the difference in the candidate you're recommending and the next candidate that was a finalist?" And so just asking questions about the process so you have more competence in that. But again, it is a board decision, not individual board members. All right. So why are we talking about this? Well, there's research about school boards. And there are some common characteristics that the Center for Public Education found among boards that are in districts that have high achievement and they're continuously improving. And those boards were united with their superintendent. They understood and respected each other's roles. And they worked well together. They worked to problem solve together to develop their focus areas and priorities. And they respected each other. And so that's really the premise of why we're talking about this this evening is to help you be more effective in developing your team. Okay, so what are the roles of the board? These were some of your responses. Some of them I got after I had already put the slides together, so I didn't capture. But for the most part, there was a lot of agreement. And I will say that you all did an excellent job of this. And one board member even quoted your policy. So kudos on that. But you captured the essence of what your role is. And so that's a very positive start in that you kind of understand that role. And so, you know, we want to look at this evening. How does that look in practice when you're demonstrating those things? In your policy, the policy that was quoted by one of the board members who responded, Policy BBA, and it's in your handout. It specifically outlines what your powers and duties are, what your authority is and what your role is. And so the first one, developing expectations, that's the legislative piece. And you are the legislators for your district. And that is one of your main responsibilities. You understand what your community expects from you. And let the... Help that inform your conversations with your superintendent to figure out what are our policies going to say? What do we say our district will do, what we won't do? Those boundaries, as well as the goals and things that we want to accomplish. As you know, employing a superintendent and delegating the authority to him to lead the district is a responsibility that you have. But you also have to be responsible to your taxpayers and let them know how you're doing in meeting those expectations and things they want to have happen. You have a responsibility to adopt the budget. And you approve staff hires. And you approve the benefits package for them. It's important for you to make sure that your stakeholders kind of know what's going on in the school and what's going to impact them. And for you, again, that evaluation piece of how your programs that you're implementing are working. And then lastly, you know, you serve as Court of Appeals. When those... When there are complaints and concerns that percolate their way up through the staff ranks, sometimes those are not resolved and people want to address the board. And so you have to serve as the impartial jury, so to speak, in making decisions about those cases. So those are big responsibilities. We are not going to touch on all of these this evening. We're going to just hit on the first three will be our focus. All right. So the superintendent's role is also defined in policy. And that's Policy CB, again in your packet. And the big chunks of a superintendent are to carry out. To you set the policy, you help define what the goals and priorities are. And his responsibility is to make sure it's carried out. And to communicate what those expectations are to the staff and make sure that they have an understanding so that everybody's working in concert toward the same ends. The superintendent and anybody he delegates this to with the other staff develop the procedures. It's the "how," you know? How will we do this for implementation? And then, you know, to be responsible back to the board in that, you know, there's ongoing reporting. There's conversations about how we're doing and demonstrating that his leadership is having an impact. And so clearly different roles, but certainly very much connected. All right, this is just an illustration of how that looks in just another way besides just words. So the work above the line is governance work or that of the board. And setting the vision and the goals for the district, the expectations the superintendent is to implement, to put it into practice. You adopt the budget. The superintendent develops the financial practices and oversees the expenditures and the revenues and reports that back to you. The board adopts policies. And the superintendent and staff develop the plans and regulations for how to implement those policies. What does it look like in practice? The board, you have to monitor how things are going. How are we doing? It's a shared responsibility with the superintendent as well. And evaluate those results periodically for, is it, you know, is it working? Are we getting the results we expect? Are we moving in the right direction? And that's something that both the board and the superintendent share and have those conversations about, how are we doing and what might we need to do differently? So clearly, you know, there's... That line is dotted because sometimes it gets a little fuzzy. And... But it's always good to step back and say, "Is this the board's work or is this the superintendent's work? And what is our piece of that in this grand scheme of things?" And it's always a question I think we need to reflect on because it's a hard one. You are in a service role. You are a public official. And you obviously feel an obligation and a commitment to your district. And so sometimes it's really hard for us to step back and not do the doing and let others do the work and us and board members, the board, asking, "How are we doing with that?" All right, so we're getting close to a little activity so that we'll... You'll stop listening to me and you'll get to talk to each other here in just a moment. So one of the primary things that you're, you know, one of those, the very first thing is that you develop expectations for the district. Kind of aligned with that is the board research, the research about what did those boards in those high-achieving and continuously improving districts? And you've seen this before. I've shared this with you in other sessions. There... These are the common practices among those boards. They consistently make student learning a priority. And it's demonstrated throughout their work. They clearly understand that delegation of operations to the superintendent, they monitor progress, et cetera. So the research is consistent with what your policy says as well. But we also know, so if you're following policy, you're also doing those things that are going to benefit your students in the leadership that you're providing. Your mission statement demonstrates that your focus for your district is on student learning. "To provide a foundation for our students that maximizes academic success and fosters civic engagement." So, you know, you're already demonstrating the very first practice that the research says and that your policy says is our focus is on that learning and you've made that a priority. I know that you have a pretty... Last year, you went through the process and redid your strategic plan. And again, one of your focus areas is around focusing on your students' learning and also regaining accreditation. And so it is critical that this is one of the most urgent things that you have to focus on is your students. They're your customers. And so that is a primary role of the board. And I know that board members were engaged in the plan, you know, some of those sessions to provide input and working toward developing the new strategic plan. So it's important that you've demonstrated that this is important to you as well. So tell me, that's a lot of words about your role being on defining kind of the priorities and keeping a focus in your work on students. Tell me what that looks like. Think about your board meetings. Think about, you know, just how you operate in the community and how you talk to each other. What are some examples? Can you think of examples of how you focus on your strategic priorities? How do you make learning a focus? How is it demonstrated in your work?
How the board members want to demonstrate or what they've done? Because we have new board members as well too, right? So...
Right. So let's first, let's say, how about, let's think about how that's played out, you know, for the board in the recent past. And if we don't have examples, where would you like to see that? How would you like to see that emphasis demonstrated? Where do you think, you know, where does that appear in your work as a board?
I think that it appears... It appears in our policy and ensuring that our policies kind of match our procedures. Some of the strategic priorities as far as closing the gap, the achievement gap and closing have kind of stemmed from ensuring that there's curriculum and instruction following up and ensuring that the board has in the past... Well, Easman, as of last year, approved the I-Rate Curriculum, which was to help achieve us to close the achievement gap, which was addressing our schools. We, a couple of years ago, addressed the making sure that we were fiscally responsible by adhering to the fund balance and closing two schools to do so and bringing it to a vote and talking to the community and making sure the community understood the conclusions that we had come to for the betterment of the district. There is... I mean, I could kind of keep going, but I want to give my colleagues a chance to say stuff.
Great, thank you. Does anybody else want to add anything? Or whether if it's a practice that you've observed or you think you carry out, or even if it's something you think would be a good way for the board, this board, to demonstrate what your priorities are?
Well, one of the things I observe is that in our board meetings we do focus on what is needed for the schools or what is needed for the students. So and with this new bond issue coming up that we're having an open communication with the stakeholders. So I have noticed that and now want to focus on that more.
Great. All right. So I also want to just kind of put in front of you, you know, many of you will recognize these as your governing documents, your governing tools. These documents that are the board's responsibility to make sure that they're current and that you're using them. And so I heard a number of the things that you talked about are obviously things that probably appeared on your board agenda. And so your board meeting is the place for you to focus, to say, "These are our priorities. This is important to us." And you do that by making sure your agenda, the things you're talking about, connect to those strategic priorities, the things you want to accomplish. And so sometimes the superintendent and when the board president and the superintendent are putting the agenda together to say, "Is this agenda item related to one of our strategic plan priorities?" And maybe, you know, code that so that we can make those connections. You pointed out some ways in which your... The financial aspect was impacted. So your district budget is a way that you communicate what's important to you. So all of these things help you emphasize what's important and to use those tools effectively. Good job. Great. All right, so I'm not sure if Mr. Obeng has shared... Were you able to share this, your kind of your draft of your entry plan last night? Was that part of your conversation?
Got to unmute. Not last night, but the board has had that in possession for several weeks.
I see. Great. Okay. So as you know, he's put some thought into some emphasis areas that, based on what he's observed so far and what, obviously, what's in your strategic plan undoubtedly, to focus on achievement, on building capacity of your leaders in your classrooms and in the district, your staff, the culture of the district and being sure that it's safe and equitable, that we connect with our community, not only just families, but also the entire community so that they feel part of the school and have a voice. I'm putting words in there, but I'm interpreting some of these things as well. Resource management is certainly important. You know that there's a finite amount of resources, whether it's financial or people or materials. And so a focus on that as well. So this is where we're going to go into some small groups here so that you have a chance to talk and you can have a chance to share. So I want to... So I'm going to kind of walk you through this before we go into the groups. So I would be interested in how you see your strategic plan and Mr. Obeng's strategic directives or priorities. Are they similar? Where do you see similarities? Do you see similarities? And I have another handout for you that looks like this. So that should be in your packet. And so at the top, you see Mr. Obeng's strategic directives. And then the bottom, and I will leave this up on the screen. I don't know if you'll be able to see it when you're in your breakout rooms or not. So hopefully you'll have your copy in front of you. And so I'm going to walk you through what I have in mind for you to do. So at the bottom are your strategic plan focus areas. And the first one, you know, you're our district. And under that, you're focusing on communication, on staffing and on racial equity. Under our schools, your focus is around learning, accreditation, student attendance, academic growth, safe and supportive climate. And under our community, it's about family engagement. And then service organizations and business partners are listed. And I'm assuming that means to develop those relationships from that. So if we were to... Let's do the first one together. And then we'll go into the rooms for you to work on those in small groups.
I'm sorry. I don't want to interrupt, but what, did we get copies of these? Was everyone supposed to get a copy of the... You said packet, but I don't have a packet.
All the handouts, Ms. Peyton either emailed to you or posted in Board Docs. I'm not sure what she decided to do. Mr. Obeng, do you know what she did?
They were emailed to everyone and everyone... Did everyone receive them but Ms. Carter?
No, I believe we all... I received it and it was shared with us through the email that you sent out. Just, it's kind of like a packet. It's in your Google Drive. When you click on it, it opens up to documents and it's kind of...
What day was this on? Was it today or?
It was like probably the last hour.
Last hour. Okay, I got to go get a different computer. Okay, thank you.
It's labeled Retreat Friday Handouts per Barks.
All right, so let me... I'll go ahead and kind of walk you through. We'll do the first one together and you can help Ms. Carter when we get into the small groups as well. So the first one, Mr. Obeng's strategic directive is to increase student achievement and engagement. Do you see that connecting anywhere with your strategic plan? And if you do, where do you think it might connect?
So where I see achievement connects, it connects with our district as well when it comes to communication, staffing. Communication and staffing when it comes to the pillar of our school's achievement definitely has to do with accreditation. All the above really, safe and supportive climate, academic growth, student attendance. And I still, and I do think that also links with our community when it comes to family engagement to ensure that achievement is able to... So all of them.
I could... I can understand your thinking on that. I'm going to ask you to pick, to limit to two areas of alignment that are most directly related.
Accreditation and student... Accreditation and academic growth.
Okay, so that's a perfect example. So in your small groups, when you get there, I want you to then take the next one, recruit, retain and train, the next four, and identify no more than two areas of your strategic plan areas in which you see alignment. And when we come back together, I'm going to capture that on the form on the screen so that we can see that and share it because we're going to use that again in a little bit later for an activity. So I'm going to give you this five minutes for that discussion. And if we can send people to those breakout rooms now and then we'll bring you back to share. So somebody needs to kind of keep track so that you can share out when we come back together as the whole group.
I'm still here.
I went to breakout group three and then it returned me right back to the main session.
You're in breakout. You should be in group... You went to three. You should be in three.
I know, but as soon as we got there, it zoomed me right back here. I didn't actually get in it.
I think it has to do with the timing. We finished a minute early. I'll wait till everybody gets back before I start viewing, spewing whatever.
Are you able to see my screen again?
Yes, ma'am.
Great, thank you. I always appreciate it when the technology works like I want it to.
Once in a while, it's only taken us to...
Once in a while, it's only taken us a day and a half. I think we're all back.
Oh, okay. Let me, I need to widen my.
We can see it just fine.
Okay. I'm trying to see, I gotta change my view so I can see all of you. I've had this need to be able to see the people I'm talking to. So let me, I just needed to adjust my screen. Sorry. Okay. So real, uh, I'm going to call on board members to respond here. This is, this is board work. So let's, uh, get board members. What you talked about in your group. So we already had, uh, increased student achievement. So where do you think, um, recruit, retain and train highly qualified staff? Where do you think that goes in terms of what, what is it most closely aligned with your strategic priorities?
Um, that would be understaffing and, um, academic growth.
All right. Anybody else have something different than that?
So I believe we found it under, uh, the safe and supportive climate.
All right. I'm going back up. Let's look at what about ensure a safe and equitable, safe, equitable and welcoming, welcoming, I can't talk now, welcoming environment.
Under the family engagement. And, uh, and, uh, communication also.
All right. Anybody else have anything different? Where we're ensuring a safe, equitable and welcoming environment. Mr. Obeng, what about you? What are your thoughts on this one?
Geez, I've got lots of thoughts. I wrote it. So I'm biased about where I think it should go. Creating a safe and welcoming environment?
Yes.
I think that definitely it hits under the student piece, but also hits under the pillar of the community. And I can't see the last two, uh, areas of your, yeah. So you've got, you've got it already under, uh, family engagement. Service organizations, I think it would go there as well too. It would, I, it would actually be prominent in racial equity.
Oh, yeah. I'm sorry. Yeah.
I, I thought it would also go.
You gave me the, since you gave me the floor, the, I know you cut out part of the, uh, which I think is quite significant. If you scroll up again, the, uh, that the, uh, recruit, retain, train, high qualified staff responsive to student demographics. I think that's a critical piece that, um, that needs to be considered that.
Right. I, I just did that abbreviated just for the purposes of the form.
Okay. Okay. Just to make sure that we don't lose it because that's a significant piece.
When I summarize it and send it back to you, uh, next, early next week, I'll, I'll make sure I have the full information in there.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes. Um, all right. And I wondered about the, um, ensuring a safe, equitable and welcoming environment. I wondered about that going under the safe and supportive climate area as well. What are your thoughts? I see head nodding.
Yes.
I will conclude, I will, I will compare.
All right. And then what about?
And what if all under student, oh, I guess student, well, I guess not under student attendance.
Well, you would hope that would impact student attendance.
Yeah, it would impact student attendance.
Right. Uh, what about increasing family and community connectedness?
I want to make sure that all other board members get a chance to respond. I know me and Ms. Kendrick are kind of really hammering away here, but, uh, please feel free to pipe up anybody else.
That one I put under communication, but we also put it under, we scrolled down a little bit. I think further down, was it a little bit further? Family and family engagement. That's what we had both, we had both areas.
Okay. Got it. Thank you. Anybody else for that one? Um, this is a long one here, so I'll try to get it all in there. So ensure effective resource management, alignment with instruction, supporting systems, structures and accountability. Where do you think that would fit the test?
Again, I would like board members who have not yet responded.
Is Ms. Graves on here? I don't see her.
Uh, Ms. Graves is talking, but I think you need to unmute your microphone, Ms. Graves.
Ms. Graves?
Can you hear me?
Now we can. Yes.
Now we can.
Okay. I went to the dentist. I had a root canal. So I really, you know, I'm, I really don't feel good and I'm still having the effects of the medication. So I don't really have a lot to say. I can't. So I'm not going to be responding too much.
That's all right, Ms. Graves.
It's not because I don't want to. I went to the dentist today and had a root canal. Thank you.
We knew there had to be a reason.
Yeah. Yeah. So. So I'm the answer. Pain.
Can we scroll back up to the, um, statement?
Yes. In effective resource, ensure effective resource management, alignment with instruction, supporting systems, structures and accountability. And then I'll scooch down here so you can see them, most of them.
Well, definitely we're following the staffing.
Yeah.
And, um,
I think maybe academic growth also.
And business partners.
Yes.
All right. I'm, I'm just going to move us on because of the time, but I think you did an excellent job of this. And I, and I think this is a conversation that you'll continue to have. This is certainly not one that will end this evening. And over the course of the next few months, particularly as, as your team develops and you get more acquainted with each other and, and the current, uh, um, status of the district and your students, uh, you'll want to refine this and work together on this. This, but this is very, this is good board work because this is big picture, strategic priorities. This is where you need to focus. This is about what is it we need to emphasize? And, uh, that we're going to be focused on as a board. And so this was excellent work. I think you did a great job with this. We're going to come back to, back to it in a moment. I'm going to hit save so that we don't lose it. And I'm going to, I'm not seeing where I share my screen right now, so bear with me just a moment. Do you still see the, do you see the PowerPoint now?
Yep. Still there.
Okay. Great. I, I couldn't tell if you could or not. So thank you. So we're back here. Let me go back. We were, sure I'm on, there we go. We were here. Uh, so excellent work in alignment. So let's move on now from, uh, establishing priorities to, um, the next responsibilities that you employ as superintendent. You've done that. And, and now you hand over the reins to him to figure out how to get this done. It's that ongoing delegation, uh, that he's responsible for the daily operations of the district. And so again, it is also emphasized as a characteristic those effective boards demonstrated in that they clearly understood the differentiation of those roles. Um, so we're going to see how that plays out in a little, in a quick little scenario. We might not do all of them just for the sake of time, but we'll, we'll do a couple of them. A teacher in this district, a teacher was placed on a professional improvement plan by the principal following her summative evaluation. The teacher complained to the board, a board member Greg, that the principal is picking on her. None of the other teachers have improvement plans. Greg asks the superintendent for a copy of all the teacher evaluations that this principal completed this year. Okay. Do you think sometimes when we call, uh, when we're having difficulty with delegation of operational decisions, we call that overstepping instead of providing oversight that the board is doing? Do you think board member Greg who was demonstrating oversight or is he overstepping by asking for those evaluations?
Overstepping.
All right. Anyone disagree with that? All right. Yeah. Greg, Greg was down in the weeds a bit. Was, do you think Greg was following policy?
No.
No.
Nope. Did he have, did he have authority to request the evaluations?
No.
No.
Why not?
Well, first of all, he wasn't following the, the policy. He wasn't following policy. He, if he, if he took, uh, Ms. Bark's, uh, course, he would have known that.
Oh, man, you're bucking for another 20 bucks, aren't you?
I'm trying to get to a hundred.
It's a procedure, it's a procedural aspect, which is covered by the superintendent. Following the chain of command, uh, they would be the building leader and then it would be the associate superintendent. It would be the superintendent that handles that. So there's like multiple layers that that person would have to go through before, uh, Greg even thinks he has the authority. So, no.
Well, you must, you, you must have this foreboding kind of, uh, be able to anticipate a little ESP there because that was, that's sort of the next question. What would have been the better way for Greg to reach, the board member Greg to respond to this teacher? Um, and yeah, she needs to go back through and have a conversation with the principal. And, uh, as you stated, to next steps would be if that's not, uh, to her satisfaction, if she still has concerns, she should address that through those other channels. And, um, you know, why doesn't Greg have authority? You know, there's, there are two things going on here. As an individual board member, he doesn't have a, he can't do anything for this teacher. Nor, um, their policy is, you know, start with the principal, you know, start at that level for who can most directly do that. The other thing is, when, when do board members, do board members have authority to look at evaluations?
No.
Nope.
No. And, and, and first of all, I think after he, the board member must realize that if that teacher goes through the process, the board, he can appeal the board. And if a board member is, uh, he, she's an ejected themselves, they have to accuse themselves for even listening to the complainant's teacher. So, uh, first, first of all, he shouldn't have presented at the beginning, but by chance if they misstepped, they did it. And then he got chastised by the board for doing it. If it did come to the appeal process to the board, then he, in this case, he has to be out of the room, uh, when the hearing takes.
All right. All right.
Can someone hear me? Oh, can I say something?
Yes, ma'am.
I think my question is, what if you have a teacher that has expressed concerns and about getting wrote up by a principal? And what if it is something like retaliation against a teacher for speaking out on a certain incident that happened? So I know you have to follow certain protocols, but what if the teacher comes to you because there is, she went to the principal, that principal is not doing anything to help. She went to the superintendent or he or she went to the superintendent. That superintendent isn't any help. So that teacher feels like her last resort is to come to a board member. So what should we do in that case? I think that's where I want to know. What should we do if they follow the protocols, but they're not getting the help? So as the board, what do we do from that moment?
Right to the board. Right.
Ms. Carter, that was a great question and, uh, it is, it is a question that comes up periodically. So, um, that, that teacher, it sounds like has followed policy KL, which is, uh, pub, you know, concerns or complaints. And so she's gone, he or she has gone through the channels. The next step is there's a different policy and I don't know the, the code for that right now. And I'll try to make a note to look that up. If you want to mute your microphone, that will help because I'm getting feedback again. Please. Uh, thank you. Um, so the policy is about formal filing of a formal complaint. And there is a, uh, a procedure that goes along with that policy. And so, um, I'll look that up and in my notes, uh, follow up next week, I'll make sure that, to include that so that, um, we, we can refer to that policy as well. So in addition to KL, which it sounds like KL was followed, uh, the next step would be that formal complaint, which does come before the board then.
I would advise or get, get a lawyer. I'm just kidding.
That, um, Ms. Bark's?
Yes.
I can tell you that's, uh, policy GBM, staff grievances.
Ms. Bark's, I would also add that the, uh, the teacher has recourse too, right? There's grievance process, there's also, um, federal harassment discrimination, um, that school boards have to follow. So they could file through that avenue as well too. So there are a number of different avenues that they could file through. And I liked, uh, Mr. Brooks's emphasis on the taintiness of the board members. And sometimes board members forget that they infuse themselves into a process, into a teacher. It might be a friend or someone they know. Somewhere down the line, the board becomes a judiciary. And if you tainted it, then you have to be, uh, recruited or it could be a technicality that would, you know, mess up the whole process. And they have to kind of remember that they're going to be the last line of defense, that it'll eventually get to, get to the board for an appeal if nothing happens along the way. And.
I, I think the board member has to, has to know how much to hear. Once they, once that, that teacher starts talking, then I think the person, the board member needs to stop right there. And this, I, I, in all due respect, I'm not the one that you ought to be making that complaint to. And I do, I think they do it very tactfully and, and, and all, uh, like I don't want to hear it, nothing like that, but you know, very tactful that have you followed the, the procedure, let me suggest you follow procedure and this is the procedure. Uh, and keep in mind that I'm a board member and I can't act, uh, on, have what I can't act on. I think standing is such a, uh, so, and I think we had a good example of that, did we not? With the, with the parent and Ms. Bark's, you don't know, but the parent who had some concerns about the marriage which, uh, we were having the graduation. And she, I don't know how many other people she called, but she called me. I never got a chance to talk to her, but she didn't leave enough information on my voicemail to let me know what she wanted. And I was gonna, I did return her call, but I guess she either decided that the way it was processed, one, do not further, go any further. But she did leave enough information. I'm concerned about the way, um, we're handling the graduation. I was a parent and, and as a board member, I would not have said, well, you listened to her all the way. I said, have you checked, have you talked to the, to the principal, Ms. Allen? And then I was just addressed to the superintendent. But it never got there, but I think that's, that's a, a real example just up a couple of weeks ago.
Right. That's great. Ms. Johnson, thank you for looking up that policy. And, uh, there is a policy that says, uh, that prohibits discrimination, harassment and retaliation. And if we can identify that policy code as well, because that's important for, uh, you have a policy that says that, that people will not be discriminated against or, uh, have any kind of retaliation for, uh, coming forward with a problem or experiencing that kind of thing. And so that's the basis that maybe Ms. And so that's the basis that maybe Mr. Obeng was talking about as well from that federal law.
And that's. Do our teachers know that? Do our teachers actually know that?
Um, my guess is it's probably in their, their staff handbook, uh, which is an administrative document, not a board, not a document that the board has to approve.
You know, that's something that their, their union representative and associations commonly go through because that's one of the primary things that representation does in terms of what do you do when you have a problem? What are your grievances? So I'd be surprised, I mean, of course, I'm sure the people who don't are aware of it, but they do share that information and found out what.
It might be, it might be in the office of the super, of the, of the school too, someplace. Where it's on the wall, if either the state commission on, on human rights or on the wall telling the, you're, what's your rights are, I would suspect that, is that, is that?
Yes, the building leaders get training on that every year on both of those policies. And the policy that you were referring to, Ms. Barks', policy AC.
Okay.
Policy that prohibits discrimination. And so their building leaders are very versed and HR is very versed in terms of advising employees how they can grieve situations, employment situations. And that, that doesn't mean Director Carter, that that isn't sometimes forgotten in the heat of their frustration and they just want to be heard. And I think Mr. Brooks provided the great example of making sure that you direct them back to board policy. Because under both of those policies, the, the board is the final saying in the appeal process on that. So it is really important to make sure that, that those are handled through the policy.
Right, no, I get that perfectly clear, but I think, let me bring an example of during school visits I've made in the past. And I have witnessed teachers crying and expressing their concerns, which they followed the proper protocols, but there was nothing addressed to it. So in my, as me being a board member, I'm not going to walk away from a teacher's concerns. I'm not going to walk away and act like there, nothing ever happened. I'm going to ask staff questions. And I, I mean, there is a certain boundary between board members and a teacher. But when I see a teacher concerned and a teacher crying on my shoulder and expressing how she has been, you know, she can't say what she wants to say because she's afraid of retaliation, that's a concern to me, a very big concern. And we had a teacher show up to a board meeting that expressed their concerns and how they felt retaliation and things. So I feel like this is something very important and it bothers me to see that a teacher cannot express their concerns or how they feel because they feel like there's nobody there to help them. That's what we are there to do if they can't get the help. Maybe I'm wrong, but I just feel like I'm not going to walk away from a teacher that's crying or expressing to me that she has nobody that she can go to and talk to about.
Yeah, you know what, Ms. Carter, I think that, I wouldn't say you're wrong because if the teacher's coming to you, they're, they're, they're thinking you're a safe, a safe person, a safe person, they can share their thoughts. And I think it's a well in your rights to give them some guidance in terms of, you know, I'd ask the questions, you know, have you, okay, have you gone to the procedure? They might say yes. Have you gone to the complaint process? Yes. Have you gone to your union? That's a place that's impartial, so that's not part of administration at all. So the union leader should be taking these teachers on and saying, hey, and they can come and speak for those teachers or guide them in terms of what appropriate procedures that they should be taking to get recourse and not feel like they, they're, they're helpless, right? Because that does happen, right? So that's what I would, I would say for board members, because you want to help people who come to you, give them some guidance in terms of what areas that you, they can go for support and then say, let me know when you've gotten, some, you've found a good guidance in those different avenues. I guess that's one of the things, I guess, we'll probably put on a Phyllis in terms of, these are really good scenarios, but it's sort of getting language for board members to say, what do you say when a teacher's crying on your shoulder and they feel like you're, you're helpless, you know, what, what do I say to them, right? And because they don't want to just say, I'm sorry, I'm a board member, I can't do anything about it, right? And how, so that's something we can think about in terms of what language we use and how do we direct them to a place where we know they'll get some, some help without feeling like they're going to be retaliated or any other sort of recourse.
Right, right. And I, and I think it is just a matter, it is a matter of practicing. And while I, I certainly appreciate your concern and care and, and understand, you know, wanting to help your teachers. And so to do that, it is practicing what to say. And I'm sorry that, that has happened to you. I'm sorry you have, you know, your concerns have not been addressed in a manner that you felt, you know, was satisfactory for you. Here's some, you know, and, and just go through that list again and say, I, because I'm just a board member, I can't, I don't have, I can't fix anything for you. These are the channels, let me know how that goes for you if you haven't gone through each of those steps. And then refer to the policies about the formal complaint and, and take those steps. Because that's the point where the board then can respond in, in the appropriate manner. And, and I think it's perfectly fine to share that if I'm too, if you share too much information with me, I won't be able to participate when it, if, if and when it does come before the board. Because I will be too directly involved and a lawyer will be all over that, believe me.
Can I add, the other thing I was thinking, I think Carter probably want to jump in on this. When we're talking to our teachers or any of the staff members around some of these policies or these federal legislative pieces that they have recourse, that we kind of need to express them that these are legally binding, that we are compelled to do something. So I know sometimes people feel like, well, no, no one's doing anything, no one's going to do anything. But if they get a written complaint from one of those courses, we have to follow that process and it'll have to go through. We can't just say, well, too bad, you know, we don't believe you, we believe this person. So they follow that, we have no choice but to actually follow the process, whether we think the person is correct or not. So that's a piece that we should probably be sharing with individuals that come for help. Like, you know, go ahead and do that because they'll have to bond.
Would the, would the, would the board member be out of line if, if he said to, if he mentioned to the principal, whatever their names are here, approach me about those, whatever, whatever. And, and at least mention to the, to the principal, but that the, that the patron has said something to him about it.
And, and. Here's my perspective on that. And this is sort of what we, what we routinely, pretty consistently say is, when you've had those conversations that, that rise to that level of, of kind of concern, that the board member should contact the superintendent and say, I had this, this conversation with this teacher who feels like, you know, they, they're not getting resolution. And I referred her to these policies and encouraged her to, you know, go through those steps. You might be hearing, you know, in case you hear about this, I wanted you to know this is what, how I, what I, how I did that.
So, and that's a good example, Mrs. Barks, because I recently, when I did do a school visit, once I left there, I did contact the superintendent because it bothered me and I needed to hear both sides of the story. So I asked that particular question. Why, you know, I had this concern and this person was crying, but the things I got was, that's not true, that's not true. So then I didn't know what to do. So I'm like, that's why I'm like, okay, we run into a wall. I don't want the teacher to feel like I'm helped, she's helpless and I can't help her. And I don't want the superintendent to feel like, hey, you know, you're talking to them, you're believing. It was like I was stuck in the middle of a situation.
Yeah, and that's, that's exactly what we want board members to avoid. Because if you're stuck in the middle, then you don't get to be a part of the appeals process when, if it comes to the board at that stage, because you've been in the middle. And attorneys are really good at figuring those things out. And so the attorney for that teacher is going to, going to, or, you know, for the district is going to zero in on that. And so it is one, it's a tough one that you have to practice and be prepared for those situations. And maybe, maybe it's a little flow chart, maybe it's some statements to say and practice that, that, you know, that you all can kind of keep in your little portfolio in your, in your pocket or your purse or someplace.
You know, I mean, this, I'm glad we're spending some time on this because this is critical. I had a board member, one or two, nice person and was well meaning, wanted to support a staff member. And the staff member took some of the comments that she had made to her as supporting her perspective. So two years later, that board member was in court. That board member because of the comments they made. And they didn't, they didn't have the full context and they made some comments, you know, trying to be sympathetic. And they ended up being in court, not realizing that this would come, you know, had they kind of stepped aside. And so they learned a valuable lesson in that, in that one. But it's easy to get into, into peril when you're not thinking about it. You're just, you know, emotionally just trying to support someone and you're trying to, and then it ends up differently. So these are tricky areas that it's probably an area we can continue to, as I said, continue to work on in terms of what kind of language we can use and what kind of supports we can do. And what can board members feel that, okay, I've done my part and how do I get satisfaction? Understanding that I've supported the, the, the district and the teacher as best as possible. And I'll wait my turn if I have to be a judiciary board and I can be part of that and I can ask the questions I need to ask in terms of helping in that situation, right?
We, we had that to happen this school year. And I was very uncomfortable when one of our board members, we, one of the teachers had some difficulty and groups were lining up to, to talk about how good the teacher was. And the board member was kind of encouraging this. And, and I, I didn't, it was, it was a public meeting, I didn't call, you know, hey, this, that. But I, I knew that, that the person, the board member was on, on, on thin ice doing that. And I think many of you remember the case that I'm talking about. And, and you really get into trouble doing that. And, and, and I, I had a feeling that maybe the board member kind of lined the folks up to come and talk to the board about what had occurred. And because there were some questions asked that kind of led me to believe that with some folks who were before the board making some comments, that they had talked about it. But it was just too, too coincidental that certain questions were asked for certain sta, uh, segment were made.
Yeah, I want to, I want to make one last comment on this in terms of if a formal complaint is filed and it becomes before the board and you're serving as the judiciary in reviewing this case, so to speak, one of the first questions you should ask in this is, did we follow our policies? And not only did staff follow the policies, but did board members follow the policies? Because if our policies weren't followed, then you're opened up to liability there. And we, you certainly don't want to risk district resources or your own personal liability either. And, and certainly that then interferes with your desire to support your staff and want to help them have resolution. And so that, in that judiciary role, you have to ask, did we follow our policies? All right.
Could I make, could I make one little comment just to me? Just when something like that happens, just remember your job's policy, what your job's policy is. So if you, when someone come, did they follow, they, just like you have to follow your job's policy, they have to follow their job's policy. So that keeps you out the middle also.
Well, I know what you're saying, Ms. Kendrick, to know, I get exactly what you're saying. But my thing is, and it's from my experience and my personal opinion, I have did school visits by myself and I experienced this. So as me being a board member, I know my boundaries and my boundary lines, but I'm just saying that I'm never going to leave a teacher feeling like they can't open up or speak to me about anything. And I'm not going to walk away from a situation and act like it never happened. Because that is one thing that was wrong with our district now, is that that trust and that communication that we have with the board and our teachers and staff. When we walk, when we act like nothing happened and we push everything underneath the rug, that's why our community does not trust us. That's why we have a really bad problem with getting our teachers to communicate with us. That's why I want to break the ice. They should be able to communicate, we should be able to work together, we should be able to resolve issues. But if we continue to walk away and say, okay, let this person handle it. We have a new superintendent right now. We don't have our old superintendent anymore. And I really have faith in Mr. Obeng and I already like his approaches. But understand from my experience in the past, I'm just addressing the past issues and we're moving forward now. So I'm really hoping, and I know for sure, I really believe these things are not going to happen anymore. It shouldn't happen, but these are some of the things I experienced as a board member and it hurts me. And when we see teachers come to a meeting and express to us these things and break down crying, that's not, that's not, that's not cool at all. That's not. And that's some things we just need to get across and just address. I'm not trying to step over my boundaries as a board member. And I can't save the world, but I am here to help and listen and be that person that's going to at least try to do something about the situation.
Right, well, Barks, can I just add, thanks, Ms. Carter, for making those comments. Because one of the things we said in the beginning of our session yesterday was, we wanted people to speak their own truth, right? So it's your truth, that's, that's yours. No one can say this is wrong or not. But this is where, this, this is the opportunity to have these conversations and reflect on whatever's happened in the past, what would happen in the past. But now we're going to look, we're going to look at how we, how we're going to work going forward and kind of design the future we want. So hopefully those experiences will help us not get into those situations and have a better sort of non-poison environment.
And I certainly think that, you know, having some practice in terms of what you can and can't say will always help with that situation. I don't think there would ever be the expectation that, that you leave a teacher and have that teacher not feel like they have a recourse for their complaint. Because we do have recourses for complaints. I mean, that's why we have the policies that we have and they absolutely outline what those processes are and what the recourse is for that. And one thing that you can, you can be assured of, Ms. Carter, is if you haven't heard the appeal, then they haven't gone through the entire process. You know, you know that because the process ends with you as a director. So, you know, I think it is important to, to kind of figure that out and practice what it is that we can and can't say. Because, you know, while we certainly want to provide assistance to someone who's upset, you don't want to find yourself in court because that teacher has, you know, documented everything that you said in response to her concerns. So I, it is a difficult line to follow, but I think that, you know, you knowing your, your policies and the processes and having the opportunity to really sit down and frame these scenarios and practice what the response is, is really helpful.
All right, that was, that's really great discussion. I'm really glad that came up. That was a great example. And it's always really much, much better when we have real examples. And while these others are real examples, they're not your real examples. They're examples from other boards. So thank you for, for that great discussion. And, and, and so it's one that will continue to be addressed because it is one of those difficult challenges that you face. But there are some ramifications when, when we overstep into the operational side of the work. And one of the, you know, when you, when we talk about this responsibility to delegate the operational aspects to the superintendent and the staff, that requires a level of trust. And it is difficult to trust when we have history, maybe that has given us reason not to trust. And we have new, a new leader who you know little to nothing about, that you're still learning about. You have new board members that are, you're still learning about. Can we trust them to be open and honest and, and speak our truth? And so that's why this, you know, thinking about how a team develops and being conscious of that and doing these things that you're doing tonight will help you be able to have, develop trust. When we, as we talk about measures, that's another aspect that will help you develop trust. But when you, when you step over the line, you're saying, I don't trust you. I don't trust the teacher, I don't trust the principal, I don't trust the superintendent, those sorts of things. You're essentially saying, I don't trust you to do this job, I need to do this. But as a board, you really need to know, do we have staff who are fulfilling our expectations for following our policies, for being respectful, for developing that welcoming environment to our staff and our students and our stakeholders? For being respectful, for developing that welcoming environment to our staff and our students and our, our stakeholders and et cetera. It's also confusing for staff because then they don't really know uh, what the really appropriate channels are. Uh, that, that can then end, that may end with that judiciary meeting with the board. And so, you know, um, it can cause tension between the board and the superintendent when there's consi- you know, consistent overstepping into the operational side. And when that tension exists, then we tend to be focused on that rather than on what are the priorities we're trying to accomplish. So although our intentions are always in, around the, what's doing best for our staff and our students and our district. When we step over that line out of board work into operational work, we're actually undermining those things that you want to accomplish the most. And so it is one of those things that you have to constantly practice on how we navigate those when our, when our. Uh, our, our staff and our parents and are coming to us with those concerns to help them uh, get through that effectively. So uh, we've kind of talked about what makes it hard, uh, sometimes it's also about not having a common focus. I think you're, you're doing a good job with that, you have shared priorities between the board and, and Mr. Obin. And even right here off the, out of the beginning. Uh, it requires trust, um, sometimes it's a lack of communication, do our staff know what the process is? Do they know what our policies say? Um, those kinds of things. Sometimes it's, it's, you know, I, some, for some board members, it's about me. Uh, and my ego, I want to, you know, we all like to have sort of a position of authority. And so sometimes that gets in the way of some board members who are overstepping. Or perhaps they're being pressured by um, a, a friend, a family member. Or um, a, a, a group that you're a part of. Or, you know, if, if they gave money to your campaign, then you may, they may want, they want you to feel obligated to. And so sometimes those pressures can be tremendous and just being aware of those and still following your policy. And, and I think, you know, Ms. Carter, I think you expressed this, you know, I'm not going to walk away from a teacher who's in pain. And, you know, we're accustomed, you're helping people. And we're accustomed in the jobs that we do every day of responding to people and taking action immediately. And it's difficult to, to back off a little bit and look at, well, where, what I can, how do I help from my board perspective? Not as a friend, not as a counselor, but as a board member and a, a part of this board. And so um, really understanding how you do that will serve your staff. But also serve the board and protect your liability as well. Um, so this was just a great scenario, thank you for sharing that. All right, um, so let's um, we've kind of hit this, I think, so we're going to move on. So the trust, you have to trust to be able to delegate and kind of stay out of the weeds. But the, the, kind of the flip side of that is that verify or the asking the questions, how is it working? And so part of your responsibility as the board is to evaluate. How effectively our policies are being carried out, are we meeting our strategic priorities, are we improving? Um, and that is, that's sort of the uh, other side of being able to trust is that you know from these measures that we're, how we're doing. Uh, so I think those go hand in hand, uh, we, it's hard to have trust unless we have um, you know, some evidence. And uh, as we have more evidence, we're able to trust more. And, and um, so you, some of you may, maybe you've participated in uh, some team development activities and trust activities. Where you stand and not touch anything and there's one of your colleagues are standing behind you and you just fall backward. And you trust that they're going to catch you? Well, that's what you're being asked to do essentially, is you're being asked to let go and trust Mr. Obin. To provide the leadership that you're expecting. Um, and that you want for your school district. And then. How are you going to monitor progress on how he's doing with that? So that you can be accountable to your stakeholders, your citizens, the people who have entrusted you to be leaders, governance leaders for the district. So um, this is really that other part of, you know, we decide what we want to focus on and then we have to figure out, how will we know if we're doing these things? How will we know if, if it's working? How will we know that Hickman Mills is doing better this year than we did last year? Okay, and, and then also, how are we going to do that? So that's the next part of um, of this step is. Or actually, I'm going to, let me exit out of this. And go back to this document that we had before where we aligned. His directives with priorities and we'll talk, we might not get through all of these, let's just do a couple. Um, and uh, so for instance. In the uh, you have a focus about, well, I'm going to jump down here, let's jump down to student achievement since that's the primary focus. That's the whole reason we have our schools, right? You have identified that accreditation, student attendance, academic growth and safe and supportive climate are, are a priority for your schools. Mr. Obin has also made, had this emphasis in his strategic directives. What are some, what are, what are some evidence, what's going to help you know whether these priorities are being achieved? What kind of information, what kind of data might help you with that?
Uh, progress reports.
Progress reports from whom or where, what kind of progress on what?
Well, progress on uh, reports from Mr. Obin. On, on implementations that he's already set forth that we would follow up on.
Okay, so some of it is implementation progress, what have you done? Tell us what you were doing to address this, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay. So that would be kind of his plan and some strategies. Perhaps.
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Obin to, to tell us where we are. Otherwise, we wouldn't be able to measure where he's brought us. And so I would expect him to say, when I came on board, here's where we were in terms of student achievement. And over the last uh, ninety days or six months, here's where we are. And I think, because you got to have something to measure it by and you measure it by what, what's the, what's the existing situation.
So keep in mind, uh, because of the COVID uh, situation. We did not do administer MAP in April. And so you're not going to have MAP scores for this year. So there won't be any data about twenty nineteen, twenty twenty in terms of state data. So a conversation that you all will want to have and, and certainly rely on your administrators to help you. Um, to share with you, what is the, the data that we collect locally, are there other assessments? Is there other data that we have here in our district that will give us some indications about how our students are doing?
Or even if you went back to nineteen twenty.
Right.
Could get somewhat of a, of a, of a, a view.
Phyllis, can I jump in just for a sec on this, on this one?
You bet.
Just for clarification, so it might help going forward. So these strategic directives, we're really focused on my entry plan. So within the first ninety days, these are areas that I'm going to investigate and be able to create some information to share with the board around. Hey, this is what I found, so I know what Mr. Brooks is saying, he's talking about baseline data, right? So that's what I expect to get under the academic growth, really find out exactly where are we, the current state. And then together we can decide on what the future state should look like. And I think the future state kind of already been defined by the board through the strategic plan in terms of some of the things they, they want to do. But I just felt I needed some areas I needed to identify to investigate and then bring that information forward and say, hey, this is what I found. It aligns with some of the things you're saying here, but I also found that we probably need to do some work in this area and this area. And then develop a plan with some uh, baseline data in order to uh, to measure whatever that data may be, right?
Ms. Parks?
Yes.
Can you scroll up real quick?
Yes, sir.
So the possible measures, the, the possible measures of, kind of doubling on what he was saying, was that this is more of a quantitative uh, gathering of data. In other words, just more or less, he's gathering information, so the possible measures is the fact of his presentation for um, setting a foundation. Uh, for this year when it comes to communication staffing and racial equity. Um, and how it, uh, how it correlates with his directives. So even when it comes to possible measures, the aspect of measuring it is his consensus upon his directives. Was he able to um, establish a formidable plan for um, creating, ensuring a safe and equitable environment? So like, see, in other words, uh, these are directives and these are entry plan directives, but the measurement is his uh, comprehension. Of uh, of what we will, what will be our baseline for measurement when it comes to, or his baseline for measurement when it comes to each of his directives. If he has a clear, concise understanding of how his directives match our strategic plan. Um, and when it comes to possible, possible measures, it's, has more to do with, I think, um, the aspect of just setting that baseline. Um, getting a clear understanding of how uh, his measures are the plan, if that makes any sense.
Uh, it, it makes some sense, but I also think it's important for the board to think about, um, you know, what would be indicators.
Yes.
To you, you know, even in terms of baseline of us taking stock of where are we now? What's going to, what are, what are some things that would be an indicator to you? You know, like, for, for example, so every time you go to the doctor's office. Uh, there are some things that they do no matter why you're there, if you're there for an annual physical, if you're there uh, because you're not feeling well. Um, you know, whatever that might be, what are the things that they do no matter what?
I, I think like, like, uh, and I'm just, I'm picking an easy one here, but like even with the aspect of racial equity, possible measures of addressment could be. Uh, how many um, how, how many staff, uh, getting just understanding of how many staff were able to receive training? Um, and if any of the uh, the uh, care, is it care teams, uh, have been established. Um, within each uh, building so that they can be able to um, continue the racial equi- equity policy. Uh, po- yeah, process, not policy, excuse me. So that would be for that one, for, for like staffing, um, it would be the numbers in which was given to us before. Whereas we, you know, we have like fourteen uh, positions to fill. Um, and how much staff we've retained, if, if he's able to uh, retain a full staff. Um, within his ninety days. Um. And uh, when it comes to communication, if he has established, uh, if he's established uh, solid communication, not just with the board, but with his E L T and his staff. So am I, am I right, am I, am I getting the gist here?
I think, I think, Ms. Parks, you asked about what do you, does, what have we, there are three things when you go to a doctor, the first thing they do. Blood, blood pressure, uh.
Height and weight.
Temperature and weight.
Right, so, so the meta.
If they don't do that, you change doctors.
Exactly, and so those are some basic measures that the medical community has decided are broad indicators of how you're doing. And those are the kinds of things that you want to think about in terms of how will you know how you're doing regarding communication? Regarding staffing, regarding racial equity, what will be those little indicators that are going to give you that sort of snapshot or take your temperature? You know, about your general health of the district. And like you say, these will be measures then that you would monitor over time to see the impact of what Mr. Obin's leadership is, is achieving. And it, and so certainly you're going to rely on him um, and the expertise of your E L T. Because they know the data that's available, they are more intimately engaged in this. But it, I think, you know, you should have some conversations so that they take those things into consideration. Because the last thing you want is for them to spend all this time kind of thinking through that and gathering this information on, in um, Mr. Obin's entry plan. These first, you know, ninety days or so, and he, and presents to you sort of the landscape of the district and you say, but what about X? What about this? And so I'm, I'm just encouraging you to continue this conversation so that um, it, it represents what all of you feel like as a team. That are going to be those important indicators.
I, I'm glad, Ms. Parks, you brought that uh, scenario up. It kind of, it kind of proves, well, I don't want to say prove, it, it further. This, when I, when I mentioned about and, 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 and.
Validates. Validate.
Uh, because, because what happens when you go and get those three things done? That doctor will also look at what the last time you were there, what was your temperature, what was your weight and what was your blood pressure?
Right.
That, that's what I was trying to say, that, and, 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 and uh, Superintendent Obin, you know, kind of validated that by saying what he was going to do. But I think we would be expecting him to do, although we don't have twenty twenty-one data, but we do have nineteen twenty data. And what does that look like in relationship to where we ought to become twenty twenty-one? I get you, yeah, yeah, twenty twenty, what is this, twenty twenty-one? Yes, it's not going, well, whatever the, the timeframe in, to give us some indication that there is some progress being made.
Right, excellent, I, the, the trend data is important, knowing where, where we are when we begin, right now, the baseline. But also then over time, you look at those trends to see where are we, you know, which direction are we moving? All right, this is great discussion, I'm going to move us along because I know we're, we're coming down the stretch on time and we're going to skip some things. Um, that we, I think, can come back to at another time. Uh, because there are a couple of pieces here at the, uh, that I think um, will probably be more beneficial. And so, you know, this is a two-way street, this isn't just about um, you know, what the board's role is, what the superintendent's role is, but how you work together. And so, um. You know, we've just talked about what are those measures that you might be using to monitor how effective Mr. Obin's leadership is and what kind of impact it's having. But what do you do as board members to gain his trust? How do you demonstrate, what do you think are ways that you demonstrate uh, individually as well as a, a, a board together?
All right, Phyllis, now you're talking, now you're talking.
Uh huh, so are you going to pay me for this one?
I gotta pay, I gotta pay you twenty-five bucks.
I got to catch up. Well, I, I think what you do, if there are some issues, rather than me to call Watcher and say, hey, you know. I've got some problem with uh, Obin, he's this, I ought to go talk to the superintendent myself. On a one-on-one situation and say, you know, I've, I've, I've really got some concern about this. Nor do I go to a public meeting or even in a closed meeting if it's a personnel matter. I think I have a responsibility as a board member to go to him and say, just to, just to share some things, thoughts with you and have some dialogue with you about A, B, C, and D. And I think that's the way you, that's the way you gain trust on an individual basis. And I think uh, on a public uh, uh, demonstration of that, I think you end up. Uh, if there's someone out there who's, who's really there and mouthing the superintendent, I think you, 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 you at least, you at least, somebody has to say some. Uh, the, the president uh, has to say something in reference to, I'm, I'm going to turn to him, has to say something in reference to that, that beating that uh, the superintendent has, has taken. that, that beating that the superintendent has taken. And, and, but just to let it hang there, I, I think is not fair to the superintendent or fair to the rest of the board members. And it will-
What are some other ways that the board can gain the trust of Mr. Obang?
I'm more than backpedal for Mr. Brooks. I think communication, I think that's the biggest thing, is communicating with him when there's a concern or an issue, instead of calling, like he said, the president of the board or another board member and saying, oh, well, I heard this happened or such and such said this and instead of going around to everyone, just go straight to the source or go right to the superintendent and ask those questions. And communicate so that way you're able to get the information you need instead of relying on everybody else's information. Because we all know, everybody can add a little to, to the story, there's, that's not there. So it's best to just go to the superintendent and communicate.
We also should just support his, his plan, support him and have a open dialogue with him as well. And just support his plan.
Um, being present. Being present to board meetings, ensuring that you are adhering to board what is being said and letting him know that you understand what he's saying. I think that that is the, one of the biggest things that, that will build trust, not just amongst ourselves, but also with him. So he knows that we are working cohesively and paying attention and adhering to the information that we're getting.
That was, I set an alarm, so we kind of queue up for the wrapping things up pretty soon. So that was, that was that. Though, those were all excellent points and I don't know what happened there.
Yeah, I make one other comment. I think also, although that, that, that staff does not work for us, I think we, we need to, to also support the superintendent when staff members are beat up on at a public meeting. That, that occurs. And I think that we need to make sure, we need to support the superintendent in the, and whatever action that he takes at that time. Because to get back to Ms. Carter's concern, and this is more public, is that that happens and then they, after that, they come to a board meeting, I come to a board member and, and, and don't lighten necessarily how the superintendent handles that. I think we have to be very careful in how we respond to them when that, when that happens.
Yeah, that's a very good point. So I, I've kind of captured just a few things I'm gonna touch on really briefly of, of some of the ways also that help to build that trust. And one of those is by following your policies. And demonstrating your BBF, board ethics policy, which is in your packet. You know, if you followed all 17 of those consistently, that would go a long way in instilling trust among your board colleagues and between the board and the superintendent. And so, you know, I, I've emphasized those quite a bit, but, but those are, you know, you all adopted those for a reason. And those are directly about you. And so that really does help. We've already talked about following the KL policy on, on helping staff understand the steps they need to go to to be able to get their issues resolved. Confidentiality is one of those areas that's always a challenge because people are gonna ask you and ask you and ask you in 10 different ways of, to try to get you to tell them what happened in closed session. You are privy to a vast amount of confidential information in the work that you need to do and the decisions that you have to make. But board president, it's your responsibility before you leave that closed session to make sure no documents leave the room and that we remind each other and help each other, you know, with making sure that, oh, that information can't be shared. And you've, you've all really touched on this tonight, and I think you, you've demonstrated this very well, is to be, communicate openly and directly. And I think you've modeled that tremendously this evening and would just encourage you to keep that dialogue going. So here's your BBF policy. As you know, it's in your packet. It's homework. Keep reading it, reflecting on it. And policy BDC specifically talks about confidentiality of your closed meetings, records, and votes. You're honor-bound not to disclose the details, and if you violate the law, you may be removed from any district committees. Your, your colleagues can publicly admonish you and they could take legal action against you. So, you know, just be mindful there. But those are the, those are kind of the, the, the the ones that aren't so visible are the ones that just affect your relationship. And when we divulge confidential information, then a parent, a teacher might be reluctant to come before the board and file that complaint when they really need to because they don't want their information to be public. The other thing that happens is that superintendents become, start kind of giving the board less, less and less information because they're worried about it being leaked. And when you don't get all the information, it's difficult for you to make effective decisions. And so it's, it's sort of that, you know, domino effect when we, it, you know, it seems like you knock over one domino and it destroys the trust immediately and it takes you a while to build, stack those dominos back up again. And so helping each other, in your, in your handouts, there's a a board, another board that we worked with a couple of years ago actually sat down and they came up with 10 nice ways to say, I'm sorry, I can't talk about that, that's confidential. Because you will be asked. You have been asked. And it's, it's another one of those challenges, but it helps strengthen your team when you can honor that. All right, I think we're kind of at the end here and I can tell there's fatigue going on. You've had a long day. You've really done a great job and, and I wanna, we got a couple of wrap-up things here at the end, but I really love this quote about, you know, as you're forming your team, that unity is strength. When you come together on a united purpose and we're working together, there's strength. Teamwork, collaboration, you can achieve wonderful things. And I know, I'm gonna cry here in just a second, because I, I know how passionate you are about your students and your district. I've heard you talk about it for several years that I've had the pleasure of working with some of you. And I've heard it this evening in, you know, some newer voices. And so I know you want to achieve great things. And working together is the way that you do this. Does anybody know who Marty Stepanik is? Well, I discovered this, I just, when I found the quote, then I just had to look up who he was. He was a 13-year-old boy who had a rare disorder, medical disorder. And his three siblings had died from the same condition. But he was 13 years old when he passed away and he was a poet and public speaker and he authored, like, I forget, in the teens, a numbers of poetry books. And obviously is, was pretty inspirational. And I, I thought that kind of captured where we are this evening with this discussion. I'm gonna, all right, here's the quiz, quick, quick. Who wants to answer? How many board members does it take to change a light bulb?
Seven.
Seven, seven board members or
I heard that.
Or the, as many members are on that board.
Anybody else? What do you think? What do you think, Mr. Brooks?
We move as one.
One.
Okay, so the real answer is
Zero.
Board members don't change light bulbs. Board members say, we want well-lighted classrooms that are conducive to learning. And you, you expect that to happen and you want then your staff to make sure that that happens. So, you know, no board members. This is about your roles. You gotta think about where does my work take place? So it was, that was a trick question.
That's tricky.
Just remember that, help each other out with that.
Here's one, here's one for you. Two guys welcome to a bar now.
All right. So just a little preview of tomorrow. We're gonna talk about board committees and we'll talk about governance team, well, we're gonna start with governance team communication. Is, if we have time, we're gonna talk about committees briefly. But we certainly want to talk about communication because a lot of the things you talked about tonight and some, will lead right into that tomorrow. So you've, you've already laid some great groundwork for that. It's my understanding we're starting at 8:00 AM. Is that still correct?
I think we're going at 8:30. President Watree, we decide-
Changed it to 8:30.
Yeah, 8:30.
Get people that, that eight o'clock alarm
Coffee break.
30 minutes to wash their face, so.
Oh, I love you for that.
Yes.
All right, and then, oh, I have, all right, look, I have, I have a couple of questions for you as we wrap up. Well, first of all, does anybody have questions? Because then I have two for you as we end. No questions, all right. So my first question is, what do you think worked well this evening in this format and our discussion? If anything?
I think the break, the breakout rooms and the brainstorming were good.
Great, okay.
I think giving, giving board members a clear understanding of their roles as well as, I really, I really, really, really liked our activity today. Being able to take our superintendent's plan as well as our district's plan and kind of convey that so that not just board members understand, but they can also convey that to, to anyone in the community. I want us to be versed in that. I think that activity really a lot, give, paints a picture for what our roles are and how we look at the measures moving forward.
I, I think that's a great point, Mr. Watree, because if you're able to articulate, this is our focus and here's how we're doing, that is one of those primary ways of you are focusing on, you know, student learning and that sort of thing. It just demonstrates that that's your emphasis when you're knowledgeable about that. Anything else that you thought worked well or you liked?
I can go on forever, so I'm gonna listen.
No, that's okay. All right, what about the flip side? What, what, what did you think didn't work very well or you would have an idea for how that might have been done differently or better?
I couldn't get my computer to work right.
Well, I'm sorry, I can't help you with that. What, what could I have done that would have made this better for you?
I can't think of anything to mind. I appreciate you.
I think you did a good job.
Excellent job, Ms. Parks, but you could solve COVID and we could be face-to-face.
Oh, man, I would love to be in the room with you. I need to hug people. So. Well, thank you so much. You have just done a wonderful job this evening. I am, I just love when, when you're talking and you're thinking and working together, so just great job. Thank you. I look forward to tomorrow and I'm just delighted that we're starting at 8:30.
So a couple of things just before you, we go. Ms. Parks, you want the breakout rooms for tomorrow, right?
Yes, please.
Okay, so board members, be prepared. You'll get a new link tonight for, for, for the meeting tomorrow. So access that link because that'll be more conducive for the breakout because I'll have control of that. And I do want to thank the board members for their participation. We had some, some norms. We talked about the beginning of the session yesterday and we really followed that to the T, even, even do, even during some sensitive conversations. So that was, that was good to see that we can have those kind of conversations as professionals and dialogue about it and learn from it. And I wanna, I wanna take away, one thing that you said, Ms. Parks, that struck me was you said, help each other. Right? And I think that's something we gotta remember, help each other during our work, during our roles and as a board so we can help our students. So thank you for bringing us together and happy Friday, everyone. And over to you, President Watree, close out the meeting.
Absolutely. So the time is now 7:53 and this meeting is adjourned.
All righty.
See you in the morning.
See you in the morning.
All right.
Have a good evening.
Have a good evening.